Okay, all right. So I am going to call this May 3rd, 2023 Mashpee Public Schools School Committee Business Meeting Agenda to Order, or Meeting to Order. The time is 5:32. First order of business is the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I also want to say that the Mashpee Public Schools recognize and honor the many generations of Wampanoak people who have lived and been sustained on this territory for more than 10,000 years. I don't believe we have any public comment, so we can move. Oh, sorry. Oh, we kind of moved things around. Okay, so first, we're going to ratify the agenda of today. Are there any changes? I'm not aware of any. Take a motion to ratify.
Madam Chair, I move that we ratify and approve the agenda from May 3rd, 2023.
Great, do I have seconds?
Second.
Second by Kathy. Any discussion? Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Jen is ratified now. I do not see any public comment. Correct, Sherry?
Correct.
Okay, so we can move on to Darlene, Delia. How are you?
Pretty good.
All right. What do you have for us tonight?
So I hope everyone's week so far has been going well. So much has happened and a lot more to come for MMHS as we're nearing the end of our 2022 to 2023 school year. For starters, Monday was an early release student, early release day for students at MMHS, but many students still had games and practices. So English Honors, the English Honor Society induction for high school took place last week. So congratulations to everyone who worked hard and accomplished becoming a member. Beginning on May 4th, any interested candidates will be able to become nominated for the school-wide Student Council run by Mr. Brody. There will be elections for the officer positions for the school year of 2023 to 2024 on May 26th. There are a lot of also just open slots for anyone who's interested in just being a member. They don't necessarily have to run for office. The Blue Falcons Theater production of Your Good Man Charlie Brown took place at MMHS this past weekend. They had four total performances, two on Saturday and two on Sunday. And although I wasn't able to see it.
Three.
Oh, three. Oh, okay. And although I wasn't able to see them firsthand, I've seen some videos and I know that everyone who's a part of the production did an amazing job and worked really hard. I was FaceTiming my friend about it and she was like telling me like how it was going and she's giving me like detailed explanation. I was like so upset that I couldn't go. There will be a Hall of Flags dedication on May 10th at 5:00 PM, which will include replaced and newly added flags in dedication to Michael Ford, who was previous staff at MMHS. And it will, and it will also be recognizing all the staff and students who come from other parts of the world. On May 21st, from 3:00 to 5:00 at the Mashpee Public Library, there will be an Immigration Day project exhibit for Immigration Day. I know a lot of people who have been working on that the past few years and they're very excited for that. There will also be a Human Rights Academy field trip on May 15th where the Immigration Day project will be presented to other schools of Cape Cod. I think it's about a 20-minute presentation. I'm not 100% sure. The group did something similar to this in the fall in Providence Town and they kind of explained what the club has been up to. There will be Diversity Day, which was supposed to be the spring, has been postponed to the fall, but it gives much more time for planning. So the celebration for the whole school will be on October 28th in the fall and it will tie in with National Immigrants Day. The chorus and band concerts are coming up very soon. I know the chorus concert's on the 15th and I believe the band is on the 16th, so they're consecutive day after. I think the chorus is at 6:00 and I'm not sure what time the band concert is at.
Seven.
Seven? Okay.
Well, that's what it says on my own calendar. If it's not, Mike gets to relate.
Both of these classes, chorus and band, will also be taking a field trip to DC. Oh, no, sorry, to Canoe Bay Lake Park at the end of the year. I think a lot of people are excited for that. The DC trip for both 8th and 9th graders, as some possible 10th graders will be taking place in the last few weeks of June. The 8th graders are going to be going a week before the 9th graders. And then there was also an extended invitation to any 10th graders who didn't have the opportunity to join. This is so exciting and everyone, including myself, is super excited for it. We're already planning out all the outfits that we're going to wear and everything. It's really exciting.
Yes.
Not yet.
Did you know Mr. Moore has loops or your chaperones?
Not just you two.
They want to be in the text chain while you're wearing.
Didn't you wear pink?
Except for, especially for the cruise dinner, everyone's already picking out their outfits and like debating too because like colors and stuff. And we're going to be on a boat too, so it's going to be chilly. Yeah, but I mean like the wind, yeah.
Are you going to be on the Potomac? Is that where the cruise is?
Yeah, it goes down.
I think so. I'm not 100% sure.
Little known fact, that's where my husband proposed to me.
Really? Oh, that's so sweet.
Yeah.
That was like a collective.
With the end of the school year, also comes finals for high schoolers. So many of the 9th graders on the DC trip, their finals will be, look a little different from the rest of the high school because finals are, I think, supposed to be around that time. So I think freshmen are taking theirs like June 1st, June 2nd, earlier in June. A lot of students are also prepping for their AP exams. I know particularly that the history AP exam is this week. So good luck to everyone participating in that. Many juniors and seniors are buying their prom tickets and their prom outfits. The theme for this year is, I believe, Starry Night, like the painting. A lot of people are excited for that, too. April Vacation was not too long ago, but still, although we didn't have school, many dedicated students and teams practiced over the week. On that note, spring sports are still going strong. Tennis Girls Varsity is going to play their ninth game of the season tomorrow. And track had a meet today against Rocklin. This Friday, there will be a Band Together event at 5:00 PM at MMHS, which is a music event for inclusion and it's a family-focused event. I will, I believe it's going to be going until 10:00 PM, but there will also be a lot of volunteers to help out. I'm sure it's going to be a great event. But that's it for this evening. I just wanted to say, though, that as we reach the end of the school year, 2022 to 2023, and so many things are going on, I really want to express my appreciation for the school committee and all it does, as well as MMHS and the Mashpee community. I feel really blessed to be a part of such a great community and I had a great time reporting all of this year's MMHS events. I hope you all have an amazing rest of your school year and I look forward to how the rest of this year will turn out.
Thank you. That's so nice. So this is your last meeting, too?
Yeah.
Oh, you and I can go out and celebrate after. Thank you. It's been a pleasure meeting you.
It's been a pleasure meeting you guys, too.
Yeah, it's been great to get to know you and we're going to miss your, well, your upbeat thing in June. So someone else will have to bring the sunshine to the June meeting, I guess.
Yeah, just, no, I'm sure it will be upbeat because it's June. I mean, not that, I'm sad that the school year's ending, but I'm excited for the warmth. Because like the week before April Vacation, it was so warm and then it just like disappeared all of a sudden. I'm like, no, where did it go? So I'm really looking forward to that warmth to come back.
Thanks, Delia. Any questions for Delia?
One quick one.
Yeah.
If no one else has any. On the Student Council election, was there any mention of the Student Advisory Board being part of that or, because you mentioned like officers, but I know that that's going to come from the Student Council. Is there any talk of that in the election?
No, I don't think there is. So there was just like, Mr. Brody has just been looking for people that are.
Interested?
Yeah, are interested. So they have until, I think it was the 11th or the 14th. Sorry, I'm not the best with dates, but they have until then to say if they're interested. And then from that period up to the 26th, they will be like creating their, running an office and then they'll be voted for.
Excellent. Great, thank you. Feel free to go for that because you still get to come as the guest.
You've got relevant experience. Okay, so thank you for that. Let's see, so next I saw, I think we have Doris here for the Mashpee Wampanoak Tribal Education Department.
Good, thank you.
Yes, because we got a few updates. Can everybody hear me?
If you want to stand, why don't just pick it up?
Yeah. All right, we've been working with a group called Educarius, which is a Department of Elementary Secondary Education. And we've been looking at the 3rd grade, 4th and 5th grade standards curriculum. And we have Nip Monk, we have Heron Pond, we have Aquina, we have Mashpee tribal members on this team and they're looking at the curriculum and we want to look at it and break it down from a native standpoint, what it means to us. So you look at all the books that have been written over the years, it's kind of like the opposite way around. So we're looking at this, what it means to us and hopefully fit that into the new curriculum coming up. So it's a major project and you know, one is just started and that's what Linnan Coombs and Anawan Weeden, they took that on. So my class, they're, you know, 33 and 4. But it's going to go on all throughout the year into the fall. So that's, that's really interesting right there. We've never seen, I don't think, we haven't seen anything like that, aside from Lisa Brooks from a native standpoint on certain things. So we also have our monthly workshop speakers bureau. If you guys haven't, haven't seen this, please do. Last, we had Danielle Greendeer and she presented our Food Sovereignty. That was in April. We also had Casey Thornborough who talked about tribal climate, not tribal climate in the sense of travel people, but when it comes to the weather. And this May 23rd, we have Aunt Joan Event, who's a Mashpee elder who also taught Indian education here for numerous years during the 70s and 80s. So she's going to be zooming from right from her house. And she's going to be speaking on old Mashpee stories. So if you want to hear about a lot of old Mashpee, please tune in, register for May We also have Natana Greendeer's workshop, so going on a Monday, right? Mondays? We have four more sessions left. This past Monday, we had Earl Mills, Chiefy Mills, Vicki Wakanabo and Ann Gilmore speak on the 1976 Land Suit. And that was pretty powerful one of here. I didn't get to see that one, but that's a big turn point for our people right there because unfortunately we lost that land suit.
How great that our teachers and staff are learning about that. That's really.
Yeah, yeah. David Weeden, myself spoke, I think, for us a second session on 1600s to the 1800s. Yeah, and that's, it's been pretty powerful one of here. Also, we got, what's going on here at Quasinite, right? We got the tribal, we got the tribal boys, which we started up, grade 3 through 6. We started out late January. It ends in about two and a half weeks. And I talked to the boys today. I have a good core of 68 kids, boys show up every Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. And I let them know, we only have two and a half weeks left. And they're like, really? I'm like, yeah. They go, can you bring it to the 7th grade, bring it to the high school? Like, we can, yeah, let me think about that. We can do something up there, sure. And that for the, all the, because I have a lot of 6th graders myself and for them to say that was pretty nice, good feeling. So they're getting a lot out of it. And what we've been doing is a lot of cultural, we've been visiting elders, we've been going for herring, developing into a team, having respect for each other and others. That's very important, you know, and themselves and learn about who the hours of people. We did two major field trips. We went to the Pequot Museum back in April, no, March, which is really cool. Some kids, I'd never been out of state even. And this past Sunday, we went on to Martha's Vineyard, over to the Quinna Social. And out of the seven boys, only one boy has ever been on a boat before. So I asked him afterwards, I go, went on the boat ride back, ferry ride back. What was the most important thing you got out of today? Everybody said the boat ride, which is really good. They really liked the boat ride, aside being sociable and jumping into the ocean. So it was, it was a good day. And we also have here Quasinite Elementary, our, our exhibit going on in the courtyard here, which is really cool, 13 moon exhibit. And we had Tudy and the girls out there today and what they were doing is digging holes in the ground for our planting mounds. So it's going to go in a, in this 13 moon cycle, which is, this right here is our new year, right? So they did the corn mounds, we built the fish and that, we worked on the foodways opera, we got a hunting area and a gaming area. And the big part is we're building a house. It's going to be a real house, about 11 foot around a Wii Q, in which people can go in. And we hopefully have a grand opening of the exhibit late September, early October. So for the community of Mashpee to come out. Yeah, lunch bunches are great. High school, Casey Coombs, Quasinite, we have close to 35 kids in Casey Coombs, pre-K through 2nd grade. Quasinite, same thing, 30, 35 kids, 3 through 6 graders. And numbers, I'm not sure on the high school, but Cameron, Sassman Weeden and Talia Landry's goes up there quite a bit. I think I'm here more than I'm at in my own office here in Quasinite. But yeah, that's the updates, guys, for our Mashpee Wampanoak Education team. Any questions I can answer?
You're really glad that this is your second office, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I heard I got one coming right now.
Thank you for spending so much time here.
Nicole, nice working with you for the last few years and I wish you the best and what you do.
Thank you. And like I said, we're, I'm not going anywhere, so still, please call me if you need anything.
Will do.
Yeah. Any questions for Doris?
Madam Chair, can I excuse myself from the table for a second?
Sure. Are you going somewhere?
Wenina Khan, Natasus Moskota, New Tomas Masipia, Kana Taimasipia. I said, good afternoon, my name is Bearheart. I come from Mashpee and live in Mashpee. I asked to step away from the table to wear my other hat in the community as the chairman of the Mashpee Wampanoak Tribe. And we actually have a small gift here. We have a pouch with some tobacco in it. And then we also have one of our tribal emblems. And we wanted to present it to Nicole, not only for your leadership, but to really say Kataba Tontama'wesh, which is a formal way of saying thank you for building that relationship and bringing back, you know, the unity in our community and all the great work that you did with the collaboration between the tribe and the schools. I don't know if we would have received the MAGA Award or, you know, been where we are today without you and having that vision and the work that you've done previously. So you've been a great asset to not only, you know, our community locally, but also the tribe and a true friend to us. So with that, we'd like to present you with this gift and we know that you'll still be here and we consider you more than a friend, more of like a sister and a family member of the tribe. So we just want to say thank you for all that you've done for everyone of us. Thank you.
I'm going to have to go back and watch that because I couldn't even hear the words. I was going to say, I'm not crying, you're crying. This is not your first broadcast, right? I didn't give my gosh to Roxanne. Yeah, exactly. Thank you. Yeah, I'm seriously going to have to play that back because I didn't hear all of it. So thank you, Brian. Okay. Minutes, minutes are next, April 5th. Does anyone have any adjustments or edits we need to make to those? If not, I will take a motion to approve.
We'll make a motion, Madam Chair, that we approve the minutes for April 5th, 2023 as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Don, second by Kathy. Any discussion? All right, Brian, how do you vote?
Upsteem.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So the minutes are approved. All right, next, report of the superintendent.
Okay, so in your packet, you have, well, first of all, to talk about the professional development that we are continuing with Dr. Warnum. She was here on Monday, met with the same group that has been her working group all year long. The focus or one of the pieces of Monday's training, she talked about stereotype threat and she defined a situational predicament in which people are or feel themselves to be at risk of confirming negative stereotypes about their social group. And she gave the example of like, you know, girls can't do math, things, these statements and that the strategy for all of us to sort of break through that is to consistently offer a counter narrative. So that was, she did a lot of sort of examples with the staff, but we hear it. And then I was thinking about something that the Student Advisory Group had told me on Friday. We were going over some of the survey results with the middle high school and I forget which question it was, but one of the girls said, I don't like it when a teacher comes in and says, could we have a couple of strong boys to come help with something? And so I'm like, oh, that really is hitting home with that sort of trying to break those stereotypes that girls are not strong and that they can't help you, you know, move boxes or things. So anyway, it was again, another good session at both the, the schools that she attended to and she comes back in June for her last with that group. And then she starts a new cycle with next year's.
And the pressure on boys.
Yeah, the pressure on boys, too. I mean, it's, it's, it's so prevalent everywhere that we don't even necessarily pay attention the way we should. But it's, she talked about an example where they, they had kids select their gender prior to taking like an MCAS versus afterwards. And it was markedly different performance. And I'm like, wow. I don't know that they do that now because it's sort of pre-done and the computer loaded for our kids, but something as simple as that where you used to have to bubble in and that it hasn't in fact. So anyway, always very interesting with Dr. Warnum. You have the enrollment on page four. Do you have any questions on that? You have personnel updates. You know, this will start to get fuller as we move through the summer, but sort of keeping a little bit of a tab. So we have Elijah Switzer. He's the principal for Quasinite for next school year. We will have him come here as well to have an introduction with you as members. Devin McMurray has been hired as a physics teacher at MMHS starting in September, even though it says July, it's fiscal year FY '24. He is coming from another district where he has many years of experience as a physics teacher, so he's an, an asset that we're happy to capture. Margaret Messina is moving to the central office starting next Monday. She's taking the position of Maria Fisher, who retired officially on last Friday. And Margaret is transferring from Quasinite, so we're currently looking for a long-term sub or potentially the permanent replacement, depending on who we find for getting through the rest of this year. And you have Athletic Director Traveri's report for spring. And as Delia said, it's very active. I will say that tonight, I'm not at it, but it's the National Honor Society Induction Ceremony, which is the bigger of the honor societies that we have up there. But it got rescheduled because of sports conflicts for, I guess, a significant group of the inductees. So it's always very busy. I will say also at the Superintendent Advisory Committee, we were talking about homework, but the kids were just saying that they wish people really realized how scheduled they were, that between sports or theater or, or all the things that they do. By people, I mean teachers. I get amazed at how, what some of the kids say in terms of when they start their homework and it's just, it is just a lot, right? Yes. I think I lost my train of thought there. Okay, so then we have Consuelo Carroll's report here. I will say, Consuelo, you know, we're currently not in a location, but as you see in the picture, she's created a little pop-up shop inside Mashpee Middle High School. So she's taken over the small office area that's right near the cafeteria and the auditorium up there. So she's continuing to function, but you know, we have to wait for that space to be made available over at the Commons, so.
Yeah, so what's the timeline?
I, I thought it was a couple of months.
Instead of moving into a temporary space, we're going to be, okay, so rather than move twice.
Yeah, I think it was a couple of months renovation. I look when I go by, it doesn't seem to be overly active, but we'll explore some options as we move forward to more permanent questions.
Yeah, would the pop-up shop remain in the school so students have an opportunity to purchase, like if they can't get, for whatever reason, like if they had something in like a school store, so to speak?
Yeah, it was, Consuelo wants to meet with several of ideas that she has, which is looking into sort of a student-run store.
Yes, exactly.
Up there, we're at the preliminary stages of looking at that.
I'm just curious because I didn't realize they did the pop-up in the school, so.
Yes, she did.
It's good, no, I like that.
What's, what's the promotional video for the school or the store or the, I just didn't know what that third bullet referred to.
I, I read that, too. I do not know and I will ask her though.
Okay.
I will email you. I don't know what that is. In terms of, and I don't know, I will say Dr. Manette's not here because she is attending the Honor Society Induction. Do, and do either of the principals want to speak? I had some things, but I feel like if I say them first, I might be taking something away from each of you that I would give you the floor for. My theme, however, is sort of this multi-age interaction that we are able to facilitate in Mashpee. Yes, so you could share one and I think Dr. Gulag has one she could share from, that I observed this week. Well, I went to it, but yeah, that's what, yeah. It was so adorable.
Good evening. Hello, everyone. Yes, we did have a wonderful day today, a multi-age exchange. And our 3rd graders from Mr. Seuss's class were invited up to Mrs. Tryonis's art classroom today. And they had drawn pictures of monsters, a 2D drawing of these great creations that they came up with. And then the high school students actually turned that into a 3D model, into a clay form. So it was really wonderful to see that. One of the 3rd graders was so excited, I like this one even better. They were so excited to see their creations come to life. And I think the high school kids were as excited to see that as our, our 3rd graders. So it was just a great collaboration between those art teachers and I think it's something that those 3rd graders will not forget. It was really a wonderful experience. So that was, was really great.
Were they on display in the lot, like in the hallway?
I think some were ahead of time, but I think the 3rd graders also write a story related to it, but was, I got to go watch it as well, so did Ashley. But so the high schooler sat next to their 3rd grade person and the high schooler held the picture that they were given from which they made this clay creation. And they were, you know, they're painted and fired and they're shiny and they look awesome. But they also individually wrapped, it was like watching this very long Christmas morning because they all, you know, got to unwrap it and see their creation.
They had these shoe boxes that were wrapped.
It was one class worth, so they were probably 20 kids.
They were 22.
I only asked because over the weekend during like intermission of the play, people were walking and I saw there were monsters.
I think that's.
And there were some people who were like, I heard conversation of, I like that one, I like that. People were picking out their favorites while we were waiting in line. It was, they looked great.
Oh.
If that, if that's what they were.
Yes, I'm sure it was. They were, the kids were just elated with them. And even at dismissal, they were walking out to the buses and parent pickup, like this was such a treasure.
They all had boxes, yeah.
They were so thrilled and so excited. So that's what it's really about in seeing their excitement and their creations come to life. They just, it was really wonderful. So shout out to Lauren Richards and to Mrs. Tryonis for making that come together. That was absolutely wonderful. I just want to share a couple other quick little things. We did have a great birthday celebration for G. Um, we did have a great birthday celebration for Gigi, who is the S.T. math character. Penguin here in, Gigi's birthday was on April 28th. So that was really great. And we participated in achieving over 100 math puzzles being solved across the state. So it was really a wonderful achievement and the kids were very excited about that and just have, be a part of it was really a great thing. We were also lucky to have jazz performers come. They're sponsored from the Provincetown Jazz Festival. And they presented for our third and fourth grades classes, um, the other day, and it was wonderful. We heard a little A-Train, you know, Duke Ellington, Jesse Gillespie, we heard all these great songs. The kids weren't so sure about, well, in the twenties and thirties. But still, they enjoyed the music very much. And we had, um, really nice compliments from the performers that our kids really could keep the beat. And they were paying attention and they could recognize the heartbeat sound from the drum. So it was really nice to hear that, especially with our investment in the music program here at Quashnet. So that was brought to us with, um, from Chris Hill too, so a nice shout out to her as well. One of the things I do want to recognize too is Dr. Hanscom and Dr. Curly for the work they have put on into Quashnet this year. On those half-days, Colise goes to Coombs School and she goes to the high school. And we have been fortunate enough to get Dr. Hanscom and Dr. Curly come for collaborative thing, um, kids, thing, kids training, collaborative problem solving, sorry. And that has been really wonderful. Um, for the teachers, it's a way of addressing not just problem behavior. It's understanding kids and knowing that kids do well if they can. And if not, how, how do we help them build the skill set that they need? And, um, so I think it's been invaluable and it's something that Mr. Carroll and I are following up with regularly here at Quash too, just to make sure that, that philosophy and mindset goes forward. So thank you for your time and effort with that. I appreciate it. Yes, we did have our floor hockey game, staff versus students. It has been contested because there was a hand pass that was called back. I did tell the students, "Did you see the game six of the Berlin?" It was pretty funny, uh, but it, the teachers did win yet again, but only by one goal. It was very, very competitive and everyone owes Mr. John Bedard a nice pat on the back for stepping in when he needed to. So that was really great. But, um, overall, things are really good and I just would like to acknowledge Nicole, thank you for your vision, your time, and Mashpee School Committee, all you have given, and, um, we appreciate you and your support. So thank you and best of luck to you.
Thanks, Mary-Kate. I really appreciate that.
And just one last thing, on your way out tonight, make sure you go by our courtyard because Darius has done a great job with our children, our cultural programs after school. The girls started, um, building moms today and he's had the boys building structures in the courtyard over here. So it's coming together and I'm very excited after many years. So, so Mr. Switzer. I will be back to see that open.
Everything handed to him, I'll tell you. Thanks, Mary-Kate. Did I, is there another thing happening with middle schoolers coming somewhere or was that at Cooms? Is that what we're gonna hear about?
High school kids in the theater class?
Uh, I don't know. I thought Carmen was said something about them coming down to Quashnet or to Cooms, no?
Well, don't, don't, don't some members of the chorus and band come down to?
They do, peer leaders come down and talk to the sixth graders. Today we had coun, the counselors from the middle school come down, but the peer leaders usually come down as well.
Oh, there's also chorus is going down too, to try and get the sixth graders going into that school.
That's what it is.
Is she chorus?
Yeah.
Yes, the whole, the music program, they come down and they try to recruit many.
We started that like four years ago, right before COVID, and it has been the most valuable way to build our, our arts program.
Just to know what's available and encourage the kids.
Yeah.
To participate with kids and they see the faces of the other students. So it's, it's a, a good bridge.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you again.
And I'm gonna be up here for career day at the end of the month, so I'm not going anywhere.
Oh, good.
Yeah. I can just go back to being a regular old citizen.
Me too, six. Fair enough.
You'll never be a regular old citizen.
All right, so we had the high school come, Christine, it's Christine Frazier's theater class.
Yeah, Chrissy Frazier, yes.
And so she brought her theater class. She had emails me and they did a rendition of the Pout Pout Fish. I don't know if you're familiar with the Pout Pout Fish. You obviously have the Pout Pout face and dreary. And so her, her students put it on and they were dressed and, um, the kids loved it. We had two showings because, you know, there's just too many kids sitting on the floor for that. So two showings, it was absolutely wonderful. It was quick, perfect length of time. They danced with them, they gave them erasers. Um, it couldn't have been better. Like it was so great. So if you, if you missed the, you know, the show, the video is going to be on the blog this week, so you might want to watch that.
I'll share.
I watched the video today. I know, I saw you. It was just so cute. Definitely, it's eight minutes of your shit. Absolutely, give eight minutes to the video. It took us longer to steep the kids.
But the impact is likely long-lasting.
Yes, yes. It was great. And they had made, the high school kids had made, um, they put the Pout Pout Fish, the scales on them, like popsicle sticks, so they told the kids wave your tails. They did. So in the past few weeks, we have celebrated, uh, paraprofessional's day, assistant principal's day, administrative assistant's day. There's been a lot of celebrating going on. The half-day was great. Um, we got pizza and we watched a great video. Colise came. It was, it was a really good day. It is the season for testing. For us, that doesn't mean MCAS or state testing, that means star testing and reading testing and math testing. And then it's also evaluation season, season for the administrators, so that's not as exciting. However, um, when Mary-Kate was talking about the, um, the floor hockey game, we're having a kickball game. I don't know if you remember last year's kickball game when Quashnet.
Oh, we have the trophy.
Okay, they have the trophy, but they, they really had a stacked team.
That was also, so it's also contested.
Yes, it is contested. They had all like policemen on their team.
I think that's, that's making a stereotype statement there about placement.
I was hoping nobody would say it. But at any point, we've got, uh, Lenny and all of his friends at Mashpee Fire Department coming. So hmm, hmm.
She will plan accordingly.
She planned accordingly anyway, so it's, uh, it's May 19th.
May 19th. Yeah, yeah, you are.
Are there wager, like are there, are there?
Oh, no, we thought we were gonna be close last year, but we got.
No, but like, does winner get brag, like more than just bragging rights?
Just a kickball trophy.
Okay.
It's, it's really not even pretty, but it's, but you want it. Also for Gigi Day, I don't know if you do that here, but Brian Pranah, bless his heart, dressed up as Gigi. We got him a new costume, so we told the kids, "They shall be there." We told the kids that. They knew it was Mr. Pranah last year because his face showed through the costume. He was, this year his face was covered and we told them we got the real Gigi. We had to wait three years for the real Gigi. Finally got him. And they were like, "Nuh-uh, I can see his neck." I'm like, "That's, Mr. Pranah's out sick today." So anyway, I think that we managed to pull that one off. And, uh, that's what's been going on at K C Cooms, you know, really high level kind of stuff.
A lot of lying to children.
Yeah, that's, that's what we do. And again, I, like everybody else, I want to thank you. I appreciate everything that you've done. And, uh, I hope, are you doing anything different or you're just stopping?
I'm gonna try to finish my dissertation.
Oh, good luck.
But, you know, I can say the same to you. So you're, you're gonna be retiring soon, I understand, right?
I'm gonna hang out with my brain.
Yeah, well, thank you for all of your services, we'll, if I'm not here for your on-farewell.
Well, it's been my pleasure, as I'm sure it's been yours.
Yes, it has, that's for sure. Thanks, Steph.
That's all I have.
Any questions for that?
Thank you. I do want to also acknowledge that this past Monday was National Principals' Day and I. And next week is Staff Appreciation Week, so there will be activities throughout the week. And we will make sure that Deb receives her special treat next week. But I, I do want to acknowledge particularly with Deb and Mary-Kate here, how, um, much I appreciate all that they do. It is a sometimes very lonely position to be the sole person responsible for a building with many children and employees in that building. And you're kind of 24/7, it's never leaves your mind. And so I really appreciate the two of you and all that you've done for Mashpee and, uh, your long careers with us. So thank you. Um, just a little update on Mashpee Middle High School. They are currently in the AP exam, um, season. And so there's at least one session for the next two weeks. There's a lot of different, uh, exams being offered. And yesterday I happened to pop into the one that was starting midday and they're probably, and I think it was only one particular topic, they're doing one subject at a time, probably close to 20 to 22, 25 kids in there. So it was very, uh, I don't know what the topic was, but had good attendance. The only other acknowledgement I'd like to say tonight is my piece in terms of Nicole Bartlett, um, stepping down as the, um, chair of the committee. We've had a six-year journey together and for me, I am, I've been blessed with a wonderful committee all of the years. But I learned so much from the members and I particularly learned a lot from Nicole. And she's been a very good mentor. There are pieces, all of you don't realize, the, the pieces that I take from you in terms of my own growth. So I really appreciate what you've done and you've been so, uh, passionate about your interests and, and your doer. And so it helps that things, we've accomplished things during your six years because of that fact and the fact that you aren't afraid to take on a challenge. You are very, um, good at making sure you have all your facts lined up and you're thorough in your, uh, defense of a position. And I just think that the impact you've had on the community, on the students, on their, their families and the staff is really not easy to measure, but I know I can feel it and I can see it. And, um, I just am appreciative for the six years that we were able to spend together and the fact that you're a volunteer in the role you are and you've put a lot of time and effort into making improvements and making it better. And I know that you'll continue to do that in whatever role because you were doing it before you stepped into the role of school committee, um, member. And, um, I just want to say thank you for all that you've done. You really made a difference for me.
Thank you.
I'm very grateful for you.
I appreciate that.
And I don't know if any other members want to use this time to say any things. We do have a little, um.
I just need to adjust your evaluation.
Yeah, it's kind of weird.
Can't fit a car back there. Must be something else.
We're not quite.
Peace, peace, yes.
It's a 1986.
Oh, wow. Nice. Thank you.
Actually heavier than I thought.
Yeah, okay, I will, um, I will set it back here. Thank you.
And this is, oh.
Put it up here in case we're doing a photo. Yeah.
It's garden, your committee, all right.
Oh, thank you. Should I take it out or?
Yes, sure.
Oh, how nice. Was this done from that?
It was done in-house, yes, of course it was.
Wonderful. Couldn't have done this six years ago.
No, we did not. We were not able to do that six years ago.
Thank you, our portrait of a graduate. Aww.
Yeah, because when you think about all the things between, you were involved with the Portrait of a Graduate, the Plan for Success, school start times, the, um, the work with the tribe and getting recognized with the Equity Award, the stadium field and the challenges there. We're almost there to the HVAC projects. I feel very good about that for, um, Saturday. She was focused on, in the Cape Cod Times today, how appropriate that was. So just so many things that can be linked to Nicole, so thank you.
Thank you so much. I, I, um, is it okay if I sit down?
Yes.
Yeah, I've had a lot of, uh, a lot of moments of, that gave me pause over the last month. Just, it's kind of be hard to walk away from something that I enjoy so much. And, but the good thing is I know all of you and I know how to find you. I imagine I'll be seeing you from that desk from time to time, um, to share my thorough research and thoughts and opinions. Darn, that's, we don't want her on the other side. But yeah, thank you so much. It's been, um, a lot of fun and it, it has truly been a privilege to work with everybody. And I am, uh, I am always gonna be the fiercest advocate and, um, and fan of Mashpee Public Schools. And I'll always, um, be your biggest champion out there. So, uh, you know, I was thinking about it after this town meeting because it was so, I remember like having to get up. I was like, "Oh, God, of course," you know, I haven't had to do this really ever. And now, of course, my last one. But, um, I was thinking, I'm like, you know, when I'm, even when I'm not on school committee, I can stand up and support the school budget and the school, you know, the things that the school needs. And, um, I think that's what, why I think this is such a cool job. You know, if you can call it a job, if you don't get paid. But, um, but it is like such a, um, a cool opportunity to meet so many people in the community and meet all the students. And, um, I, I sort of like, when I penned that article for the enterprise, it was a thank you to the community. I felt like that was kind of me, ah, taking stock, kind of letting go a little bit. And, um, you know, with two teenagers at home, I really, I don't think there's really any time, good time to be away from your kids, but I feel a certain urgency to be with them now and to have more of my time spent at home and, and, um, supporting them. So, um, I'm, but I'm just grateful to each of you for putting up with me at this table, to you for putting up with me. You know, I've made some great friends, uh, on the staff that I will always treasure. And, um, I think we are a really fierce, uh, group, uh, together when we're rowing in the same direction. I was, um, in Hawaii last week and, uh, we did a lot of cultural, um, immersion and, and working on our proficiency in Hawaiian culture as part of my, my position at NOAA. And, um, we got to, uh, go in a outrigger canoe, double hull canoe. And they teach you how to do this. These are eight people I've never, you know, I've sent them emails. And we've worked together on a lot of things, but we've never really done anything like this before. And so they kind of, they put eight of us in this canoe and, um, you each had your paddle and, and there was a, um, and I was nervous because I have a bad shoulder and I, but I was like, "I'm not gonna miss the chance to be in a, an outrigger canoe with native Hawaiians in Hilo Bay, you know, on the big island of Hawaii. Like I have to do this." So when we went out there, it turns out that you can, you row all together. And I was one of the counters, so you're counting your, um, strokes when you put the paddle in the water. But the truth is, you really don't have to row that hard. Because everybody's rowing together. And you can feel that surge in the canoe every time the paddles hit the water. And it feels like it's just your paddle hitting the water, but everybody's just hitting at the same time. And it's a really amazing feeling. And, uh, I think I just, that the gratitude I felt in that moment is really the same gratitude I feel, you know, when I get to work with all of you and what I've gotten to do to represent this community that I am not native to, that I am not from. This isn't a place that, um, I grew up, but it's a place that's very special to me. And, um, and I'm gonna make sure as many people know about it as I can. So, thank you, guys. Thank you. Does anyone want to talk?
I was gonna say, does anyone want to go first or?
You can talk to me after.
But we want it on record, Nicole. All right, fine, I'll go first. Um, I just want to thank you, like everyone else, for your six years of dedication to the Mashpee students. you, like everyone else, for your six years of dedication to the Mashpee students, to our community, to our town. You know, you definitely were one to put the students first, and that was evident in pretty much all you did. You were very inspiring in how you approached things in the sense that, you know, your passion and your zeal for making sure that our students and our faculty have what they need, but also balancing the needs of the community, and I think that, you know, has shown through in your tenure here. Personally, I've learned a lot from you over the three years that I've worked with you. Granted, the first year was all virtual because of COVID, but when we were finally able to get together, you know, and be this unit, like you said, that has been able to do quite a bit in just even the three years I've been working with you, I've learned a lot. So thank you for your guidance, your leadership, and your dedication. Don't laugh. We have, I know, but it's not an old word. Mentors, anybody can be a mentor. High school kids are mentoring, like sixth graders, it's not that big of a nation. Not sending you to nursing.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you very much. It's nice that we, well, you're one of the reasons I felt like it was okay to leave.
Thank you.
Because when I started on this committee, at the time, there were no moms, you know, there were no women at the committee, no offense to the men, but I just felt like in order to be representative, we should have a couple, and, you know, I'm leaving at a time when there's a really great mom on the committee and a fierce advocate for kids and students of all shapes and sizes and lots of life, and in your history in Mashpee also makes you a really good member of this committee, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, so right back at you.
All right, are we ready to move on?
So, Nicole. Can you hear me now?
Just one last. I don't get to do it again.
I know. I can't believe how quickly six years has flown by. That must be because you're getting older and I'm getting younger, or something like that. You know, I think back of some of the things that we've accomplished over those past six years. I know there's still some students that are regretting the change in the starting times, and, you know, eventually they will graduate and get over it and find out that, you know, they have a luxury of starting late versus having to get up at a real working time, like you and I and everybody else has to do, but, you know, it was nice to have someone who had that enthusiasm and drive, not only here at the local level, but to also take that to both the state and national stage. You know, Mashpee's never been on those stages, as far as I'm aware, and so to have that exposure and be able to share your insights and share the insights of others about Mashpee, I think was fantastic and excellent opportunity. Very big shoes to fill going forward, and I'm sure collectively the members next year will, will try, but you are leaving a huge void, in my opinion, and, you know, we will not have anyone who is an expert in doing surveys anymore.
I've learned a lot from her about surveys. I still don't like neutral, I'll tell you.
Plus and a minus, as we've found out in many debates on whether to word it this way or that way, and, but those were, you know, good conversations to have and learning experiences for all of us, and it just goes back to reflect on that each of us bring unique skills and talents to the Mashpee Public Schools, and collectively we help make it better. It will not be the same. It'll be different. It's been different almost every two or three years that I've been around here in Mashpee, and I expect that it will continue to be like that, and I appreciate everything that you've done for the committee, me individually also, and, you know, I cannot quantify the overall impact that you've had on the kids. It's unlimited, I think is the appropriate term to use, so.
Is it worth like a cup of ice cream a week? Lifetime supply?
What is it, the guy that does the, what is it, the chase, or not chase, the commercials that always, you know, on the little statue?
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate it, and anytime you want to come back, there will always be a seat somewhere.
Well, I was like, Dawn, I have learned a lot from you being on this committee. I mean, you're one of the people that was, you're the only member of this committee that was here before I came on, and I had a lot of thoughts about school committee members before I joined the committee, and, no, but I mean, I really, I really learned a lot about, you know, what it, what it is to sit on this side of the table and the time and, and effort it takes, and I see, I know how much time you've put into this role, and I feel like that, that sort of elevates the game for everybody. You know, you've always taken your role very seriously, and so for me, that made me better as a committee member, because I knew that, you know, I had to be paying attention to the budget. You can't just let Dawn, you know, you can't just let Dawn be the guy who analyzes the budget. You can't just let Dawn be the guy who works on contracts, and I just would encourage you to mentor some committee members so that other people can be as good at that as you are, because I'm sure eventually you're not going to be sitting in a seat, and we need that skill set on here. It's very important. So thank you for, right back at you for bringing your A-game to this committee.
You're welcome. We've got Brian here training on that.
He needs to work on his face. He can't be smiling all the time. Well, that's a good strategy, to smile all the time.
Yeah, yeah. I don't really want to, you know, beat a dead horse, so to speak. You know, I think that, you know, I've kind of said what I had to say, you know, on behalf of the tribe, but just reflecting on, you know, kind of our journey, you know, the first time you ran, you were elected, we ran against each other.
Yep.
You know, we've come a long way, and I felt, you know, good after that, knowing that you were here and, you know, the partnership that you created with the tribe and the partnership meetings, and, you know, to Dawn's point, you know, even rising at a national level, you know, with various, you know, being the Chair of, you know, the divisions and so on and so forth, and also representing, you know, Native Americans as a representative on that also for the National School Board Association. I'll also never forget my first conference in NSBA, you know, training with you and Kathy and kind of showing me the ropes, and, you know, it was great to have you, and I know that you'll continue to be, you know, an advisor and a friend to us, and, you know, we can always call on you whenever we need you, so know that you still have our support.
Yeah, and thank you. I will never forget the giant Brian banner at the, like, at the, at the NSBA and seeing like...
In the general session when he was on the big...
Like the giant screens and seeing like Brian Whedon and the little man, and I was like, oh, I've done it. Like, I can step off this committee and be happy. Like, that was the coolest thing. So I, those, going to those conferences is not easy, because we all have to leave our lives and jobs, and, but it's definitely, I'm glad that I got to attend a few of them and meet some interesting people, and being there with you and Kathy was a personal highlight for me. It was just a really proud moment for me and for Mashpee, so right back at you. All right, let's move on, because I love attention, but this is getting, this is even too much for me. Okay, anything else that you had for acknowledging?
I do want...
Okay, so we're going to move on to the old business, the Michael J. Ford Hall of Flags. Did you want to read anything before we do that, or do you want just a motion? How are we doing with time? Did we read it last?
We did read it last time, yes.
Okay, I couldn't remember.
No, we didn't.
Okay, so I would be, I feel like...
Yeah, I was going to say, I am more than happy and excited to make the motion that we officially name the front hallway of the Mashpee Little High School the Michael J. Ford Hall of Flags.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dawn. Any discussion? Well, I will call for the vote then. Brian?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. It's unanimous.
So next Wednesday, the 10th, at 5:00 PM, everyone should plan to attend. It's open to our entire community. We will have refreshments. It's also getting merged a little bit with the Who We Are Immigration Project, so that's becoming a permanent location for those that were done in the past. I believe there's two girls who are doing a little choral presentation, so it should be a nice evening, from 5 to 6.
Going to lose my school calendar. Have to start putting everything on my own. Okay, so that's next. Oh, Ashley. Ashley, there you have it, of course.
First, I want to say thank you, Nicole. I have a little few words, so that's as far as I'm really going to go.
Thank you, thank you.
Moving back to the budget, the FY23 reports are in your packet. Do you have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any. I do want to acknowledge, though, I know we're not, we still have this, the vote, the election on Saturday, but I just want to recognize Ashley for all your work and time and patience getting us to town meeting, and I can't, I can't even know how many meetings and phone calls and everything that you did to make that happen, and I'm grateful that I was not present at all those meetings, and, but no, I really, I think we, we are where we are because of your hard work, so I can't wait to celebrate with you, get through this vote on Saturday. Okay, let's see.
Do you want to touch on 24 at all before we go off the budget? It's not on the packet, but we did have town meeting on Mondays, so move it up quickly.
Touch on what?
FY24.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Our budget did pass on Monday, our operating and our CIP. The town did vote to move ahead with the $8 million bond that needs to be voted on on Saturday, so just saying it publicly, anyone who's available on Saturday can vote, but our project is to support the E-Track upgrades in all of our buildings. It's also to support various other projects throughout the town, including the Town Hall and DPW, as well as Fire Department and Police Station.
Yeah, so we're, the Fire Department's getting one truck that can do the job of two. The police station has an air quality issue that they're resolving. The DPW roof is leaking. The Town Hall is leaking, and is it leaking?
They were getting...
It's an HVAC.
Different leaking.
It's HVAC, no, it's the HVAC pipeline.
Yeah, and, and then we have the HVAC upgrades here, so it's, it's a nice way to help the whole town with one single vote. Vote yes on question two on Saturday. Please put that in the article. Thank you.
Yeah, the precincts.
Oh, yeah.
So there's three different locations now.
Yes, everybody's got their new precinct location, so I'm sure there's no reason to worry about turnout, but we are very grateful to the town for moving the location out of the Quasnet School, and I think it's gonna, there was a lot of issues and complexities with the most recent election, and I think not having that on the plate of our principals and our administration and the concerns elevated by our families is going to make education the focus of these buildings again, so thank you for that. Okay, so we have, next we have the superintendent evaluation. So I think you have a handout on that. You guys should have all received it. I think I sent it out to you guys on Monday, and I am just going to not read the entire evaluation, but just kind of go through. Patty and I have met and gone over this in detail. You have provided comments in most cases. I'm going to not read all of them, just going to do a little selection to move us kind of swiftly through this, and then we'll have an opportunity to, you'll have, each have an opportunity to add on or pile on if you want. So it's no surprise to Patty, but it shouldn't be a surprise to anyone else at home. We're watching that our superintendent has gotten an exemplary rating for this year. This is the, the first time it's happened since I've been on the school committee, and I feel like it's a reflection of her hard work and frankly, laser focus on the priorities that the district has set and that she's been so dedicated to implementing, so thank you for that. The first standard that is in the evaluation is instructional leadership, and this is, "The education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling." The criteria for this, this standard are curriculum, instruction, assessments, evaluation, and data-informed decision-making. In particular, the committee was unanimous in its exemplary rating for standard 1D, which is the evaluation standard, I mean, the evaluation sub-criteria. As such, the superintendent promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling. Overall, the superintendent sets high expectations for the administrative staff and teams, administrative and staff teams. Within contractual guardrails, the superintendent monitors the overall effectiveness of both the frontline teachers, support staff, and the administrative team. The superintendent leads by example, builds consensus through collaboration with all stakeholders, and doesn't expect anything that she wouldn't be willing to do herself. Members also believe that the superintendent makes it a priority for the goals and vision of the district to be at the forefront of every decision she makes, so that rating is exemplary. The second standard is management and operations, promoting the learning and growth of all students and the success of staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment, using resources to implement appropriate curriculum, staff, and scheduling. The criteria for the standard are the environment, the human resources management and development, scheduling and management information systems, and fiscal systems. Superintendent received exemplary ratings for three of those standards, and in particular, fiscal systems was a unanimous exemplary rating by all the committee members. As such, the superintendent leads the administrative team to develop a district budget aligned with the district's vision, mission, and goals that addresses the needs of all students. She allocates and manages expenditures consistent with district's school-level goals and seeks alternate funding sources as needed. She proactively communicates budget rationale to staff, community members, municipal stakeholders, and the school committee while providing regular updates on implementation of the budget. One member noted, "The superintendent has broadly excelled in developing and maintaining a strong positive fiscal responsibility while supporting the overall vision, mission, and goals of the district. Achieving a fully diverse workforce is an ongoing challenge due largely to macroeconomic issues and ongoing post-pandemic workforce issues. However, the superintendent seems to be doing everything possible within her power of authority to achieve a more diverse administration and staff." Next, standard three, family and community engagement, promoting the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnerships with families, community organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the school and the district. So in this standard, there are sub-criteria that include engagement, sharing responsibility, communication, and family concerns. I always feel like this is the part of the evaluation where it's pretty easy for me, and it has been for many years. I feel like this is an area of consistent high performance for the superintendent in the time that I've been on the committee. She also received an exemplary rating for this, and it, the committee was unanimous in noting that the superintendent excels in this standard. And it, the committee was unanimous in noting that the superintendent excels in this standard. Every member provided, every member but one provided the superintendent with an exemplary rating for every criteria in standard three. So, that was across the board. This is quite an accomplishment, and the superintendent should use this feedback to ensure her attention and diligence in this area continues. More importantly, I, I hope that when you do decide to, you know, retire at some point, that your successor prioritizes this as much as you have. Because I feel like you've, that the stability that you've created for this district and the community is, I, I don't, I haven't seen anything like it anywhere else on the Cape, much less, you know, across Massachusetts. So, and somehow you do that from born, I don't understand. Anyway. Standard four, professional culture promotes success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture of reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning for staff. The criteria for this standard are commitment to high standards, cultural proficiency, communications, continuous learning, and shared vision. Let's see, the committee unanimously provided an exemplary rating for the cultural proficiency standard. This means the superintendent promotes success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture of reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning for staff. I think that you realize, and we all realize, that cultural proficiency is like a journey. It's not something you like achieve and then stop doing. And I feel like that's, that's the standard that you've set here at this, at the district. And, and I think that's why you got such a high rating. Superintendent DeBoer works to ensure that Mashpee Public Schools maintain a professional culture where diversity and cultural differences are seen as strengths. In addition, she has ensured that there's a shared understanding of the direction of Mashpee Public Schools in terms of the type of students that graduate from our district. Professional culture is a real strength for the superintendent. She is clear about her vision for the district and reinforces it consistently and thoughtfully. She demonstrates urgent patience and persistence in her collaborations to support cultural proficiency of all staff. The opportunities provided for this staff, for the staff this year are exemplary and recommend, and reflect, rather, a commitment to culturally responsive practices and equity. She champions teacher accomplishments in this area, promotes partner priorities, and creates time and opportunity for staff to grow and learn in this environment. Students are heard, issues are addressed in a timely manner. The superintendent continues to explore strategies to grow more participation and involvement by staff and families. While this will always be a work in progress, the superintendent leads with conviction and care in this area and is a model for others. Finally, we just want to add that the superintendent should be committed for taking proactive steps this year.
Committed, no.
Did I say committed?
No. Sorry.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of reading, thank you. The superintendent should be commended for taking proactive steps this year to partner with Dr. Warham to promote a culture of diversity, equity, and inclusion in Mashpee Public Schools. This is a long process, but we are at least beginning to address it. The establishment of a student advisory council is a great way to enhance the opportunity to influence outcomes. Alright, so, thank you so much. And is there anybody that wants to add anything, or?
I don't think I could say anything more eloquently than what I have written.
You were very eloquent, Don, I have to, yeah. Was that ChatGPT, or is that? It was really good. Okay. Brian, do you have any?
No.
No.
Great work, Patty.
Yeah, and as I understand it, the evaluation's gonna be public, it'll be posted on the website, so.
So, sorry.
Yeah.
That being said, the highlighted parts, because they're, will be put on as this.
Yeah.
So, the, the standards that are highlighted are the standards, just for clarification. The standards that are highlighted are the ones that were evaluated this year, correct?
Right.
Alright, just want to make sure, because there were a couple even named that weren't highlighted, but.
Hmm.
It's okay, it's all good, don't worry about it.
I'm having trouble reading.
It's okay. I just want to be clear that the highlighted ones are the ones that she was evaluated on this year.
Yeah, you're right.
And if they weren't highlighted, they are evaluated in future or previous years.
Right, I'm sorry.
Because we do not evaluate her on all standards every year.
Right.
Just as an explanation for anybody who opts to read this.
But this one was, why is that?
No, I don't think it was.
Oh, okay, so.
And there was, you also said engagement, and that one also is not.
Yeah, that's the one that I thought.
Yeah.
I think it's because my copy, I, I.
It's all good.
Printer, my, my colors are all the same. Really tough.
But if this is the one going online, just if anybody opts to read it, just know, they all eventually get evaluated just this year, the highlighted ones are the ones that were focused on.
Thank you, and Kathy will probably be in charge of this next year, so you can be assured that it'll be done properly.
But yes, thank you for another great year.
Yeah. Thank you for your support. Okay, so we already hit on, did you have anything else to say?
No, I just appreciate the support that I feel on a daily basis from the committee and the collaboration that we're able to move forward together.
Oh, you are the hardest-working superintendent I know.
Well, I mean, I hear from colleagues, not necessarily on the Cape, but when we go to some of our broader events, and it's not the same experience for everyone. And I think how hard that must be if you don't have sort of a good connection with your committees. Thank you.
Okay, so we talked about the town, the election on Saturday, question two, yes. New precincts. We have an executive session scheduled for tomorrow here, 5:30.
Yes, here at 5:30.
And, and then do we have any report-outs from subcommittees, working groups, liaisons? Anything from the committee? I didn't, the only thing that I forgot to mention when Darius was here that we don't have on an agenda, but we have not set a meeting with the tribal council. We, I think last year, we did it over the summer purposely.
But there was something else that conflicted, so it ended up more being the school committee with the tribal education department, like it.
Yeah, so anyway, it's, that's something for you all to put on your to-do lists. I don't think there's any additional public comment. Okay, is everything okay?
Yes.
Alright then, I think with, so we need to.
I make a motion to adjourn public meeting in order to enter into executive session to conduct strategy sessions and preparations and negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, including the superintendent. Public meeting will reconvene.
Yeah, to reconvene. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Brian. Any discussion? Alright, Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So, we're gonna adjourn public meeting and start executive session. I'm holding my gap.